Seems I've read in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I grow.
Here.
Householder.
Here.
Flowers.
Here.
Weingard.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart.
Here.
The reading disposition in the minutes of the previous meeting counts which pleasure.
Make a motion we dispense with the reading in the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Motion by Agar, second by Weingard, dispense with the reading in the previous minutes. Chair will call for any additions, corrections, and/or deletions. Hearing done. Per call or roll?
I grow.
Aye.
Householder.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Weingard.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Motion carries. When you stand approved, just present it. Citizens comments, any citizen which should address council this evening. There will be a second call later on in the meeting. Okay, hearing done. Reading referring to communications and toward petitions. Madam clerk, do you have any?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, do you have any?
No, sir.
Madam Solicitor, do you have any petitions or communications?
No, sir.
I have one communication was received today. This is from W. Quicksaw and Associates, addressed to Mayor Pinkerton. I think the manager got a personal copy of this. A pre-construction conference has been scheduled for Tuesday, April 7th, 2015, at 10:00 a.m. municipal building. Your attendance is requested. Any staff member may attend. If you are unable to, please contact us immediately if you have any questions concerning this meeting. This is the subject here would be the 2015 street resurfacing, specifically 15th Street project. I will not be able to attend. I know this would be in the middle of Mr. Not Mr. Hart, Mr. Wright's workday.
When is it?
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
Tuesday at 7:00.
No, Tuesday the 7th.
Tuesday the 7th?
Tuesday the 7th at 10:00.
Yeah. I was planning on being there. 7:00 p.m.
You're gonna be there.
I'll be there.
If I'm off, I'll be there, but if I'm not, if I'm not, I'll be there, especially if you're going back to Los Angeles. I'm not there Tuesday.
For free.
Thank you. To your consent. Ms. Weingard will attend if you want to.
It's pretty standard stuff. Go with the particulars. Everybody, all the council. All right, very good. Report of council committees and council representatives, finance, Mr. Hart.
Yes, Mayor, members of council. Finance committee has not met since our last council session, therefore a motion to pay bills dated from 3/7/2015 through 3/20/2015 in the amount of $278,826.28. Put that forth as a motion to pay.
Second.
Motion by Hart, second by Wright, to pay the bills when funds become available. Questions or comments?
Mayor, any questions and comments? Bills that are outstanding for this pay period are as follows. Again, AT&amp;T was $4,198.88. Hampton Blue Cross Blue Shield was $18,946.43. Payment to Michael Benz and Associates was $24,306.8. Ohio Edison was $7,534.20. ODOT District 4 was $16,020.10. That was for salt purchase. Payment to James Power, which is the fuel for the service department, was $2,071. And a payment to Huntington Bank for $178,500 for bond interest and principal. Those were the most high-end payments out of this pay period that I thought were worth noting to the council. And that was all we had on that.
Okay, questions? Very good, Mr. Hart.
Just as a side note, the manager and I have signed the bond today, and it will be picked up tomorrow by the Representatives Huntington to reestablish that loan.
Right.
So that has been done, or at least our end of it has been completed. Other questions or comments? Hearing done. Per call or roll?
I grow.
Aye.
Householder.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Weingard.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart. Aye. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Hart?
Yes, Mayor, the manager gave me a piece of information in the packet, and I can't do it this week, but I probably have to go through Finance Committee for the purpose of looking at the service form and position. We want to look at that again in committee, and I know Joe said he would not be available the rest of this week, so I will, to the manager, I will be getting in contact with Betty and Joe again to schedule a meeting for finance to look at this also.
Okay. Anything else?
No, Mayor, not at this time.
Can't break it. Legislative, Ms. Weingard.
No meeting.
Capital improvement, Ms. Householder.
No meeting here.
Antisation business land development, Ms. Strigro.
No meeting, Mayor.
Service maintenance committee, Strigro. What am I going there?
No meeting, sir.
I don't have your name down here, Mr. Wright, thank you. I'll get that. So I get to redoing this. Savings committee, Mr. Flowers.
Two meetings, Mr. Mayor. We had safety committee met on the 16th and 17th respectively, 5:30 on the 16th and 6:00 on the 17th with the sole purpose of interviewing candidates for the deputy chief's position. Committee with members of council went into executive session, interviewed the candidates, and we will be having another meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 to interview the remaining two candidates. We adjourned at 8:00 and 8:30 respectively.
Very good. Anything else, Flowers?
Smith Township dispatching contract coming up after this, and I'll finish.
Very good.
Don't you mean there's two meetings scheduled?
There's just one.
I kind of noticed instead we had two, one night and one another night.
Yeah. Yeah, what we could do is, I'm gonna call for requesting executive session at the end of my report on another personnel issue. Do you want to discuss that during the executive session?
Yeah, we'll do that. Just to coincide with what you said.
Yeah, no, and it's probably good that we get clarification on that, so.
Yeah, okay.
Council Representatives, Parks, Mr. Wright.
Parks did meet last week, Mayor, and you and Mr. Drew were there. I was absent from that meeting, so a week before last, 12:00, I guess it was, I follow that. So I turn that over to either one of you folks to elaborate on what went on up there.
I have nothing to report. I can, I was gonna do that part of my report if you want.
Okay, however you want to do it.
Rather brief, okay.
Planning, Ms. Weingard.
There was no meeting. The next one is, should an issue come up, the next one will be April 2nd.
Okay, very good. Civil service, Ms. Householder.
No meeting, Mayor.
The Vietnam Memorial Veterans, the Veterans Memorial and the retention committee is myself, and neither committee has met, has no, has not had any meetings since the last council meeting.
I hate to keep saying no meeting.
With that being said, manager's report. Mr. Manager, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke with Debra Nichols. She's our WSRLA district loan coordinator. This is regarding the crypto project. She indicated that it is currently under review by engineers, and that our plans are at the Central Columbus office. I'm hopeful that we get some feedback on approval this week. I did advise George Sundry, who's our engineer from Michael Benz and Associates, to continue to move forward on the project as the funding is getting to the point of approval. Based on this, we are gearing up to advertise for the project on April 16th, for an April 16th bid. There will be a pre-bid conference at 10:00 in chambers on April 1st. I have given council in my last weekly report a list of demolition properties. The only ones that are active or still under consideration is 435 South Johnson Road, 146 West Pennsylvania Avenue, 368 East Vermont, and 113-115 West Indiana. However, I was advised by Triple Diamond through Canton Financial that they were going to have that property down in the next seven days. What I would like to do is, if you have an opportunity, members of council have any properties on their list, please get that to me. We'll go ahead and run while a new list, and then we can prioritize that based on the funding we have left. Sir.
616 West Tennessee, you can go ahead and write that one down now.
Okay.
Before Bill has to go over and board it back up again.
Yeah, I appreciate you. If any other members of council have any properties that you think should be reviewed, please let me know.
120 East Texas. I believe that property's been inspected by the fire chief already and the health ward.
Also, the property on Maryland owned by Spud Moore, that's gonna be determined as soon as I have a final meeting with our building inspector to see whether or not the building permits have been pulled. If not, we're gonna go ahead and proceed with that, so I just want to let you know. And it is $8,000 in fire escrow fund, which is insurance money that was kicked over to us just specifically for that purpose. So I would say as a final issue on the demolition list of properties, we currently have a budget of about $25,000. That is certainly good for one property, depending on how much the tax payment is, we may actually get two. I definitely would like to get council's feedback on the top two that you want to take down. Pothole repair is in full swing. I very much appreciate Director Sanders' efforts and his crew. I know everybody's aware that the roads are pretty rough out there, and we're moving as quickly as possible on that. The one thing that I would mention on that, especially for public notification, is if your car hits a pothole, it's kind of considered like an act of God under the rules and policies of the city, and it's not just Sebring, it's pretty much any city. Your auto insurance would be probably most appropriate because the city will not reimburse for that. There are exceptions to that rule, but that's primarily in the form of if we're doing work on the road and it's not properly marked as a construction zone and you hit something, then that's a different story. But I have been getting a lot of phone calls about cars and suspensions. I know it's an issue, it's an issue every spring, but I just want to let the public know that technically the city will not reimburse for that unless it's exceptional circumstances. Did have to have some work done on some various vehicles. That's in the report, and hopefully, Bill, where are we exactly at, is everything back or?
Still waiting on the dump truck and the grader.
Okay. The grader, of course, is critical to getting the alleys back online, but roads are gonna take priority, and then we'll go with the alleys. But I am very pleased to announce, as the public may know, that we're gonna do a lot of paving this year, so you should see a lot more roads getting fixed, so I'm very happy about that. The city clerk filed the park levy with the Board of Elections, so that will be on the ballot for November.
May I interject? There will be no primary in Sebring this year. They have nothing on the ballot. They stopped in the other day and said they will not be coming into town in May, so it's all in November.
All in November. Now, of course, that levy is renewal, so it's just to renew what's already on the ballot.
It is possible for a primary in August for local offices.
September.
Or September.
Yeah, September.
September. Be two council seats and a mayor's seat.
I did attend a park board meeting. Most of the discussion involved around preparation and park programming facilities for the spring. There was a brief meeting and executive session to discuss personnel, but there was no action taken. Inspector Finch, our building inspector, recommended a new building department fee schedule. I already given that out to council members. He feels that our rates are rather low compared to other jurisdictions, although I would request that be considered by Finance Committee at some future date to get some input on the fuel based on what our rates currently are. The final bid specifications and project schematics for the crypto speridian project are done, and they are currently in the mayor's office if anybody wants to review them. No word yet from EPA on the approval. I'm hopeful this week. The pre-bid meeting will be held in council chambers on April 1st, as the mayor mentioned, at 10:00 a.m. The bid opening is scheduled for the 16th. We're hopeful that there's a late spring start date. However, I do want to let council know that even though I have approval to move forward, I'm not going to award that bid unless I know that the funding has been secured. So don't commit us to a million and a quarter project unless I know we have a million and a quarter. Solicitor Tolson advised that she had contacted a couple attorneys. They're very well versed in tax law, one was retired from the IRS. That's good. I will advise, if there are additional prospects, when I get them, but I did want to mention that Mayor Pinkerton recently went to a tricotta meeting, and he advised the Ohio Municipal League is currently looking at HB5, and they are in the process of generating templates for municipalities to use to bring themselves up to that new tax bill. So my thoughts is to see what happens with the aluminum and how quickly that happens, and take a look at those templates. We may find that those templates are adequate for us, which saves us the cost of those tax attorneys, so. I will keep counsel.
The one attorney that I spoke to, she got back to me and found a firm that had done all the work for free.
Oh, great, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd love to get that information.
You found a firm that did this all for free? Well, the tax attorney that I contacted, she retired from the IRS, and then she went to law school, and this is what she keeps doing. She keeps doing the work, and then she said, "Well, you really don't have to hire me. You can just go." She's never gonna make a living. And she found a firm that had done all the work and put it online, so. I don't think the village is gonna end up having to hire anybody at all. They have some nominal parts, you know, but.
I can't imagine that.
I don't know where she found it. I don't know where, I don't know how she found it, but she forwarded a link to me, so I'll ship it on over.
I appreciate it.
Would you? I would like to read it. I can't believe it.
She says it's all on here for free. I mean, somebody should pay these people for doing it for free. I said, "Yeah, I suppose somebody should."
Well, you know, sometimes you get what you pay for, too.
No, she, I mean, she. No, she says it's all good, so.
Okay.
The tricotta meeting, they did indicate that through the municipal league, they have been told that there are some minor changes coming, not to get excited and start working on this yet locally, that probably when they recess in June for the summer, it'll all be wrapped up, and they immediately have things ready to roll and include whatever minor changes the Congress makes or the legislatures make. So it sounds like people are well enough, far enough along, but we shouldn't have to hit the panic button to be in place by the end of the year.
Yeah, I don't think we need to hit a panic button. However, we have so many discrepancies in ours that I just can't believe we don't need an attorney to straighten it out. But I want to look at this and see if that falls in line. But the Ohio Municipal League is a lobbying group. Well, I'm sorry, that's not good enough.
Well, I think there might be one misconception. I don't think we're going to be amending ours. I think we're going to be throwing ours away and adopting what the state has.
I think so, too.
So that's, should take care of that issue. So the municipal league should be the one that was.
We'll keep our eyes on it if that's what happens, then.
Okay.
No, no, it's quite right. My time is council's time. We've placed ads for the seasonal code enforcement officer and seasonal service department laborers. We're also looking to replace a part-time laborer, and we are also in the process of gearing up to get the secondary crew put together for the waterline distribution project. I'll keep council advised as that materializes. There will be an RCAP audit on the carbon filter project on April 21st. That will be here at the city building. It's a single audit, which is required because the village received an excess of half a million dollars in federal funding, and that, of course, came in the form of $600,000 CDBG portion, a grant portion of that project, so that's required to have that single audit. I have been advised by Parks Director Courtney that she did meet on my cap, and the contract should be signed as of today.
It wasn't signed?
I believe so, yeah. That's a case of nice to have that done. I was contacted by Triple Diamond. I had mentioned that already, sorry. They will be taking down the structure at 113-115 Indiana within the next week. Item, my last item, Mr. Mayor, is there is legislation before council time regarding employee raises. In the report, there's a breakdown of some questions that were asked by council members earlier. I didn't know whether you wanted to discuss that in any detail or in executive session or how we want to do it prior to the legislation. Any other thing I would request is a brief executive session to discuss two issues in personnel at the mayor's discretion. I conclude my formal report.
Any questions, Mr. Manager? Mr. Wright?
Yeah, I got some questions here. So on this protocol for medical calls, probably some of those might be directed towards the chief. So the first scenario is for all medical calls, no response, no one signs in in four minutes, we call Beloit. So we dispatch Beloit, and then somebody signs in, and they say, "I'll go ahead and cancel Beloit." They don't dispatch.
Is that current protocol, the protocol that I haven't seen yet?
You haven't seen this one?
Yeah, that's your standardized protocol to pan out. She indicated that there are four minutes between each call.
Current protocol's four minutes.
They're talking about, I've heard that they talk about modifying this to the degree, but I haven't seen any one.
No, no, we haven't discussed modification. I was briefing council on.
The current one, yes.
Four minutes. Yeah, and I think we need to probably discuss that a little bit more in detail, because I think there's some confusion on after we dispatch another one, then somebody signs in, we'll just go ahead and cancel the one we dispatched.
That cancelization either by supervisor or somebody on the fire department doesn't cancelization.
Yeah.
We continue to follow the protocol until we get advised otherwise by the radio telephone.
And I'd like to see that part of it changed, that once we dispatch an alternate EMS crew, that's it. We've given them four minutes to make up their mind whether they want to take the call or whether they don't want to take the call. After four minutes, dispatch calls the next ambulance on the list, and that's it. Nobody should have that authority to override that, in my opinion.
Two questions I'd ask. One, do we want to consider reducing the time from four minutes to three?
Absolutely.
And the other part is, do we want to discuss perhaps in committee certain response to certain calls and non-response to others that we discuss before such as assists?
If that's what they want to do down there, then I think we need something from them that states that they don't want to do those, or do they just want to do them whenever they feel like doing them?
Well, I thought we were looking to fine-tune the bits, so our response time is.
Yeah, four minutes, four minutes to me is too long.
Is this being put into committee? Is that why we go?
That is actually the protocol that exists as of today.
Oh, this is what exists now?
I would like to see this kicked over into safety so that we can incorporate this, like, very quickly into a meeting, so that we can get to the bottom of this and we can get this problem rectified very quickly before something happens and.
I think, I think the short version is the three minute, and then take a look at which calls we're actually responding to. I think that might help fine-tune EMS.
And who overrides once we've decided to go with an alternate? I don't believe anybody should have that authority.
Yeah, I think once it's locked in, just so the dispatchers are comfortable with the same protocol over and over and over again, so there's any deviation, it should be probably locked in.
I agree. I think Mr. I grow has.
Do we have any idea of what calls they get charged to the residents or what calls don't get charged? Have we ever thought of maybe suggesting that on the lift assists and stuff, there's a soft charge, even though it's just in a lift?
Just transports are charged right now. They're charged to their insurance or their Medicare or their Medicaid. We accept whatever they are provided, and if insurance does not cover the call or they're uninsured, it's soft billing, we receive nothing. And we do that for both Sebring and Smith Township.
Oh, should we consider?
Because citizens are hardworking. I'd have to ask Mr. Hart, too. He was here when we started this. He's probably the only one, him and I, that left. It was my opinion, I may be wrong, but I thought we were going to transport and respond to emergency medical needs, not lift assists and evaluations and stuff like that. And this could be some of our problems with getting people out. You look at the number of calls these guys are handling, in excess of 300 calls a year. That's a lot of running for a few people. Mr. Flowers?
We, according to Ohio law, we have an obligation to respond regardless of the call. We do not have an obligation to transport. We can call somebody else to transport. We, as a fire department, have to make sure they have a means to the hospital, but we do not have to transport ourselves. We do have an obligation to respond.
My point, Kenny, is their salaries are being paid by us, and it's not being transferred to the people that are calling. That's why we should have a soft, even if they're not gonna transport, we should be paid for that call. That's what we're paying that salary.
Well, I agree with you there, but they are, their salaries are being paid by our tax dollars. So in essence, the residents are. Smith Township I do have issue with because we do not have a contract for EMS with Smith Township. It is only for fire. We do, I mean, residents do get free ambulance service. We have the right to build our insurance, but they don't have to pay us if they don't have insurance, because they already pay taxes.
I think the chief has something that, like.
I believe that when this was established, when Jim was on the committee, we established ourselves as, and it was explained to us that it was an F-something, so we had a status that we were claiming as we were as far as an EMS transport service. Once we remained that status, then we had an obligation, as Mr. Flowers has stated, that we have to take, we have to take the call, take the care, because we were classified under some classification under EMS, and they mentioned the F-something, it was some kind of licensing thing that when we started this program, that we had to maintain those transports because of that classification. That's what it was explained, and I believe at that time.
Well, it certainly appears as though there's nothing interesting that we should put in committee and do some review of it. Mr. Flowers, I think you've been busy, but you want to take this on?
Absolutely, no problem.
So it is in safety committee?
Mr. Mayor, I did have one question for the manager.
Yes, Mr. Hart.
Bill kind of tied in with that. There's a catch station on 12th Street between Ohio and Oregon. It is caved in, you know, are we waiting on better weather to rebuild that, or?
I had to have, oops, mark the gas lines and everything, and they just got it done. So it'll get done this week. It collapsed on me.
Yeah, I realized that it collapsed.
Okay, thank you. Anything else in the manager's report?
You want, did you want to motion to have an executive session after the meeting for this?
I would do that at the mayor's discretion. I'll, we'll do that at the end of the meeting.
Okay, fine.
Okay, ordinances and resolutions. No, report of other village officials. Almost missed that, yeah. Councilists via in the report.
Nothing.
I usually don't do this, any department did?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we had discussed some ordinances and some zoning issues in the downtown area. If you would, we had talked about putting it in committee. Is that something we're gonna move forward with?
It is.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Chief, I put that in my, in my report to council, the weekly report. So I know it's something we do need to discuss, and I could get over to that to some of the committee at their discretion. Thank you.
I could do it now, just so nobody else, nobody else thinks we're gonna forget, because I do have a note.
Okay.
But thank you, Chief. My pleasure. Ms. Weingard.
Yes.
Legislative committee.
Yes.
Would you, in cooperation with Ms. Householder? No. Planning's on, Mr. Wright?
No, myself. Want me to talk for myself?
Legislation.
And planning and zoning. Answer yourself, too.
And the planning commission. We would like to.
I'm supposed to be in the report. I usually don't do this, any department head?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we had discussed some ordinances and zoning issues in the downtown area. If you would, we could talk about putting it in committee. Is that something we're going to move forward with?
It is.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Chief, I put that in my, in my report to council, the weekly report. So I know it's something we do need to discuss and I could get over to that to some of the committee.
Thank you. I can do it now, just so nobody else, nobody else thinks we're going to forget because I do have a note.
Okay.
But thank you, chief. You're welcome. Ms. Weingard?
Yes.
Legislative committee?
Yes.
Would you, in cooperation with Ms. Household, no. Planning zone, Mr. Wright?
No, myself. Want me to talk to myself?
Legislation.
And planning and zoning.
Answer yourself, too.
And the planning commission. We would like to look at establishing some type of a historical district for the downtown area.
Let me, let me address that with you. The Historical Society looked into it. There are so many regulations and hoops to be jumped through that we need to find a different way. But how about if we put it into legislative committee and I'll research it and see what we can do, what kind of alternatives we can come up with without having all the restrictions that will be placed on it if it is an actual historic, if it is named a historic site.
That's fine.
Okay. Go ahead, too.
As I understand it, the village can create and design legislation appropriate to whatever we feel that a historic district will be. The one thing that you may want to avoid in order to avoid the heavy restrictions is you have to make sure that none of those buildings are in the National Historic roster. Once that happens, then yeah, it has to be brought back to its original.
It's a long one. They showed me the list of things that.
That's a National Historic roster.
And we can get around and do it ourselves without that.
You can do a district without the National Historic roster. It can be done. There are, there are other, a lot of municipalities have that, but yeah, once you put a property on the Historic roster and it's listed, you have to bring, if it was built in 1798, you have to use all our materials that we built in.
And colors and.
Everything.
Steps.
You're just looking at creating your own, keeping a historical district, not something on the Historic roster.
We'll research it.
Yeah. But I think eventually we'll have to do a planning and zoning for adoption because it's going to be a zoning code, I would assume.
That's me, that's Andy me. I'm the tail of Barney.
You got it.
Barney White. Carry your bullet.
You got it. Markety is going to be busy, too. I usually don't call department heads, was anybody, anybody else have anything they want to? Very good, we'll move on. Ordinances and resolutions.
Mayor?
Mr. I grow.
As usual, I'd like to make a motion that we read, Resolution 12-2015 and ordinance 06-2015 by title only.
Second.
Motion by I grow, second, and by Wright to read by title only. Questions or comments? Hearing none, court call.
I grow?
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Motion carries. This Resolution 12-2015 comes from Finance Committee Councilman Hark. This is a resolution authorizing and directing municipal manager to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program. Having heard the resolution read by title only, council, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, make a motion to adopt Resolution 12-2015 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Hark, second by Wright to adopt Resolution 12-02015. That's better. We got a problem?
It says ordinance.
Okay. Change that?
Just a typo.
Typo. Motion was Hark, second by Wright. Questions or comments? You all, where we do this annually so we can take advantage of the large purchasing power of the state. Hearing none, the court call.
I grow?
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
I grow?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Hark?
Aye. Motion carries. This is ordinance number 06-2015. This comes from Finance Committee and this is Councilmember Hark. This is an ordinance authorizing 3% of salary cash disbursement in lieu of annual salary increase for full-time village employees and declaring an emergency. Council having heard the ordinance read by title only with an emergency clause, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, make a motion to adopt the ordinance as read with the emergency clause.
Second.
Motion by Hark, second by Wright to adopt as presented with the emergency clause. Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How will this affect their rate of pay for next year?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. As I indicated in my last minutes' report, the purpose of this is to.
I know, but how will it affect their?
It doesn't really affect anything.
So their rate is not going up?
By virtue.
So you're losing a year.
By virtue of this, you're giving a 3% cash disbursement in lieu of a 3% annual wage increase, which means we don't have to amend the wage ordinance to reflect 3% wage. The only negative effect that it has to the employee doesn't increase the salary rate for PERS, for pension.
Right.
However, this is.
Do they know this?
Uh.
They're okay with that?
Well, I think the alternative was, it was, the basis of this was a savings because of the 14% increase in health benefits.
So it's this or nothing?
It doesn't have to be this or nothing. I mean, council can do it at once, but we, I think, based on the Finance Committee means and council in general, that the council felt that a raise was appropriate. Obviously, but we were looking to save money because of the 14% increase. Now, fortunately, the year before, for the same benefit, we negotiated 4% reduction, which is actually a hurdle in the whole district. So technically, it was a 10% increase. 5% per year. But based on the calculations, you know, we are saving about 20 grand, somewhere in there. So you could do it either way. The only thing I would say is if the legislation was not passed and council decided to do the 3%, then you would have to give me some lead ways because they'd have to reconstruct the entire city budget on labor costs that have to be recalculated.
Okay, so when you did the budget, this is how you had planned to do it?
Correct, the budget.
So everybody's on board with this?
Yes, the budget was designed that way because we talked about it in the pre-budget hearing, Hark, it being passed. We put the, we funded it in the contingency line item rather than putting it in wage ordinances by department and.
When they get this lansum, well, it have the, their income tax withheld, don't it?
Yes, all those things will be deducted from it. That's the only negative effect. I'm only recommending it as a one-time thing because of the 14% increase. So it gives us, it saves the village money because of the next year's compounded.
I got that part. I just, there's got to be a downside and the downside is it's not going to affect their PERS.
Correct, just for that, just for that year.
It'll be the same.
If somebody corrects me, I think your PERS is based on your highest five, nine years.
But they still, but everybody will still be making a contribution to PERS.
Correct. All that will be deducted.
So that total of PERS still increases for the employee.
But not next year.
Yeah, it, right, it takes this year's PERS out, like freezes, it's just freezing the rate, the same amount is deducted. But if we gave a 3% increase, like we traditionally do, that PERS would reflect that compounded increase.
Right, but PERS is not only based on your service years, it's based on your highest three years. So we're bumping up in cash, that one side, but not particularly this particular year.
Correct.
Okay. So it's not a great loss to the employee.
No.
It's a 3% loss next year. It's what it is.
It's the compound, what's that?
It's a compound, in fact, yes.
It's fine, if they're, if they're good with it, I am, too. I just wanted to know.
You know, I have solicited a lot of employees, I think, the only ones that would eliminate the effect would be those that are closer to retirement because it would be calculated based on those final five years versus maybe, at least the last 10 years where it's not. Does that mean it's going to work at least another five? Start next year.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, court call.
I grow?
Aye.
Householder?
Upstein.
Flowers?
Aye.
Weingard?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Hark?
Aye. Motion carries, ordinance passes with emergency clause. Anything else in ordinances and resolutions? Citizens comments, second call for any citizens' comments. Any citizen wish to address council at this time? Hearing none. Other business? Any other business to be conducted, council?
I got one question for the.
Mr. I grow.
I had a, presently a board member, one of our committee boards, wanted to know, Theresa can tell me, whether or not they can apply for the code enforcement officer's part-time job.
I don't think that's a conflict unless it was a board that was specifically regulated the code, which doesn't apply.
What, boards? What kind of board?
Civil Service is the only one.
Civil Service, yeah.
Yeah, that was.
That was the charter change, Joe. So you can be an employee of the village and you can serve on a board and/or commission with the exception of civil service.
I didn't want to get it screwed up, so I might find out.
Yeah, that was the only one, that was the only one when we discussed the charter changes was that it might have any kind of conflict.
Okay.
Any other business? Chair would recommend that we go into executive session to discuss personnel.
So moved. Second.